We have, what we're working on here time wise, we need to have something approved by a vote. And I'd say let's shoot for next Monday and have it on the agenda, if there's any way we can do it by then. If not, we'll have to have a special meeting sometime later in that week. We're supposed to try to get it by 18th or 19th. How about the CNF, by November 18th? If we get it on the 15th, we can do it here right away.
And remember, we're gonna have two council people missing.
Yeah.
I trust you guys. Famous ones.
Are you gonna be going for the whole week?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm unavailable Thursday, starting this Thursday.
Okay, so everybody try to remember that besides we have a lot of stuff. I don't know, you know, we have the proposal, and I will say, Andrea, I read it in the paper there where it said, you know, this is a starting point. And that's kind of how I feel. So, you know, if anybody has anything they want to start throwing out there again, I've got some myself that I want to throw out there before we're done that I've requested from Laura Brown, but I haven't got it back yet.
Well, I gave you an email that came in today.
Okay, maybe it's in there.
Yes, it should be. It's dated June 8th. It should have my name right at the top of it.
He's reading it.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, maybe I have it at home by now, I don't know what time she sent it, but I didn't see it yet. This is what I requested from her. I also asked her to run the numbers. I'd like to know what kind of mileage it would take if the tax credit was taken back 100% if we went to property tax, but I see that's not in the tax. Well, I tend to, does everybody have a copy of that or? I tend to agree with it. I mean, that's the point I made, but the only reason I asked for that is because that was brought up by the mayor. She had proposed that, I believe, a couple of times through our, what we've been doing here. I talked to some people and I said, "I'm willing to look at something like leaving the street lighting in." You know, they had all kinds of stuff in there the last time. But I'm not ready to leave the tax credit at 75% myself. That's just one vote right here. So, whatever we propose, if we don't think that... I have alliances, legislation on how they handle their income tax and their tax credit. And ready that they, they froze their tax credit at 1.75 when they raised their income tax to 2%. They raised theirs 0.25, or 2.25, I don't know how they figured it here, but... They did freeze it down, that's what I'm personally looking at. Start writing down the road.
You wrote maybe first.
I would agree with you, Paul. I know we talked last week about just leaving it at 75% and trying to get the 2% tax. I don't know how that's feasible because we're just gonna be causing out-of-town workers to pay even more than if we leave it that way. I like how we originally had worded it, where we freeze the tax credit at 1.8 and everybody pays that additional 0.2%. I know if we leave the street lighting fee, if we talk about the 10% reduction of elected officials, that's some extra funds that we didn't have in the original plan. And the vehicle placement plans and other things, I mean, that's all extra stuff that we've added into the plan since our first over-rounder last year. But I definitely, I'm not comfortable with leaving the tax credit at 75%. I don't know how it would ever pass.
Anybody else? I see Ms. Brown's point, that email, which she points out, is when you reduce the income tax credit reduction, when we eliminate that, with the current plan of the state, and the 0.2 increase that is being discussed would go to all streets. So, there's nothing coming into the general fund. And then we would have a reduction to the general fund of 500,000,000, which puts us into the shortfall. So, if we're going to get rid of the credit reduction, which is something I've been paying for as well, we need to adjust how the 0.2 is spent, because it can't all go to streets. We're gonna have to at least allow a half a million to come into the general fund often. I would think that maybe we could also possibly look at using alliance as a line. We're currently at 1.8. What if we recommended something instead of capping the credit at 1.8? We capped the credit at 1.75. The additional 0.25 would then go for streets and general fund purposes. That might be a middle ground that is fresh, it's new, and maybe we can get some conversation with the mayor. Otherwise, we're just throwing the same plan back at the wall. And no one has any incentive to have a conversation. We tweak it a little bit, now we give something to the mayor for the mayor to consider. You give the commission something to consider, and it generates more revenue. Currently, the citizens that are affected by the credit reduction pay at 0.445. If we model after alliances, they'd be paying 0.25, so there would still be an overall reduction in the tax.
If we leave it at 0.7, or if we leave it at 75%, then they would pay 0.5 if they get taxed 100%.
Yeah, so it essentially be cut. So, we would actually generate probably additional revenue to the city. We'd have money designated for streets, maybe some for the town.
So, are you saying, I understand you correctly, are you saying that you would give 100% credit up to 1.75%? So, the other 0.05 now plus additional 0.2 would be paid by everybody?
This is a thought, I mean, I'm not saying...
But I mean, you're saying that, you're saying that, so we don't run negative by 2019.
So, and then you could just split it somewhere, maybe 0.1 goes to the general fund, 0.15 goes to streets and highways. You're only losing that 0.25 to streets and highways from the current application.
Yeah, I mean, what she's saying on this email, on this spreadsheet, she's not, she's not putting anything back into the general fund out of the increase.
So, we gotta find a way to put stuff back into the general fund in order to reduce that credit and still have a robust enough increase for streets and highways to be able to do something. You know, and we all know that if we had $1,000,000 or something like that, it wouldn't go very far. We were gonna be able to hand street replacement.
I'm kind of going along with that, but I also am still in favor of five years. Because that way, you always have to worry about doing it for five years again. But at least it'll let the citizens know what we're saying we're gonna do, we're gonna get them. You know, because just leaving it open-ended, it just, I think that's trouble.
I know that was the rally we planned last year, I believe, the last time.
Yep.
Five years. I don't know, this time around, I guess, looking at the numbers, if we're starting to chip away with what we're putting towards streets, that 300,000 would, may generate, isn't gonna go very far at all. And the vehicles, it's gonna go even less toward that, you know, depending on how it shakes out. You know, I've never been a huge fan of the credit reduction either, but I feel like we're just playing catch-up. And perhaps that income tax rate would have been looked at years ago, maybe we wouldn't be in this catch-up type of situation that we are now. So, I mean, although, I guess I would, I would love to be able to tell people, hey, in five years, you know, if we have been doing our job, then vote for it again. But seeing the extreme uphill battle we have, and that I think we're still gonna have at getting it passed, I guess I'm a little leery of putting a five-year on it, just because we're gonna need, we're gonna need that revenue to get our streets up to where they need to be. And after just hearing Keith talk about all the catch bases that still need to be done, and even though on some of our bigger projects, we are, you know, able to fix a great number in those larger projects, I guess, I don't know, that's where I'm struggling with. I would love to be able to tell the people, hey, after five years, if we're doing a great job, you know, you can renew it and, you know, or get rid of it, but I don't know, I just feel like in five years, we're still gonna need it. Because we're gonna still be, hopefully, progressing, but it's still gonna be needed.
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Coer, Coer, I'm sorry. If we don't put a time limit, like the five-year thing, on the income tax credit reduction, down the line, what is the possibility of giving everybody a tax break just for a single year?
What's the question again, sir?
Instead of limiting it until five years, if, say, five years down the line, we have enough revenue coming in, can we give the citizens a tax break for that year?
By city ordinance, legislative, actually, you can always change the tax credit.
Even if it's just temporary? So, like, so like, we pass the tax credit, and it's, let's use Ed's number, 1.75, and then the extra 0.25 goes toward streets. But then, like, in this particular year, because we've done so well, we've done what the city said we're gonna do, our budget is balanced and all that good stuff, and we're in the black. Could we, as a legislative body, allow for a tax break for that one year for the citizens? Or any year for the citizens?
You could do it for the one year, but then to put it back on?
Yes. Would it take another legislation, or would...
Yes, it would. Yes, it would. It might be a very difficult one to do, you know, going back and forth like that.
I'm not saying back and forth every other year, but like, every so often, just throw something out.
May I make a suggestion deeper? If we're looking at copying alliances, and that's working for them, with 1.75, 100% credit for that, I would rather we go 12.5% reduction, which gives us the 0.25 tax credit reduction on 2%. The reason being, with that tax credit reduction starting at 1.75%, we're missing tax from people who work in Orrville, who work in Navarre, and those places, with tax rates under 1.75.
So, what you're recommending is go to 2% and then take the 75% up to 87.5%.
Right. And that spreads it out among more people.
That makes sense.
Maybe doing the same concept, generating more revenue.
Yeah, good point.
Just, did you have something? I need to run these numbers, have them seen, the difference between capping this at 1.75, 1.8. I'd like to see exactly, you know, because we went through the number back, we talked about the 2% and the 1.95, and it was really a very, very small amount of money. You know, we're proposing putting a considerable amount of money in the streets. And maybe, you know, maybe we do want to renew it again in five years, but to only, what we are proposing, if we, let's just say the front page of this thing, going to 2% and 100% credit on the first 1.8. If we just reduced that 2 tenths going to streets, that, you know, just like you said, a couple of the figures there, wherever you pick, that would put in, that would put another 100,000 per year into the general fund. By the time we get out of the fifth year, there would be enough revenue, extra revenue came in to take that in at the black. I just don't think we should back off of this 1.8 yet. I think, looking at the 2 tenths, I don't see where, I agree with streets, but I don't see where we have to put the whole 2 tenths in the streets. I don't think if we took, if we took 5 hundredths of it, it wouldn't be that big a deal, but it would maybe give us enough to balance something. Whatever it would take to bring the fifth year into the black.
I think maybe what we need Ms. Brown to run then would be, let's do the two additional proposals that we've kind of phrased at the stage here, the 1.75 with 1.5 to streets, 1.0 to the general. And then look at what Mr. Coer has brought up, taking the credit reduction all the way up to 87.5%. And see what, because without those numbers...
Would that be on a 1.8 or the full 2?
On the full 2. And what he, this will be, nobody's saying, I got the copy, he's saying, somewhere like Orrville that only has one credit tax, or 1% tax, when you cap it at 1.75, someone working in Orrville would not be affected. They would get full credit for that one. When you alter it to an 87.5% credit, then even the person that's only paying 1% to Orrville would still pay a small portion of that, so... And a cap, so that's more equal. I would need to see those numbers, kind of like Paul said, see those numbers and see where we can come out with that. At least this conversation, I'll tell you, I came here today, I didn't really want to have any of the conversations. None of it sounded good, but at least some of this sounds like it's new. We're not talking about the same thing, and maybe we can kind of find something that can help.
Well, there's a lot new already, and if we're even talking about leaving the street lighting, the other place. That's 300,000 right there. And 100% of the 0.2 going to streets, isn't it? That's due to the mayor's reports. They said, "I don't know if it's necessary for us to put all of that into the streets." We should be able to still have this in the black. I don't see, you were talking about alliance there, okay? They cap theirs at 1.75. To me, there's not much difference between 1.75, 1.8, very low. How does that affect the smaller cities and villages and stuff that have 1%? How does alliance affect theirs? How does it affect theirs?
Well, they don't collect as much. They don't collect anything on any rates less than 1.75.
Just like, okay, let's say what Brewster had named as a 1%.
Right.
They've got 1%. Right now, we're getting nothing from anybody that lives in Brewster.
Right now, we're getting, with the 75% credit, we're getting some.
Okay. I just, I think, to get splitting years, because 1.75, 1.8, I still think, you know, that...
It's in that same logic, if alliance's rate was 1.8 or others is 1.75, will we be looking for the tariff 1.8?
I'm not looking at their 1.75, I'm just looking at the way they did it.
Yeah.
You know, I don't care if it was 1.6 or 1.9, they've got the 1.75. They also, at the same time this happened, if you look at this on a date, it was, I believe, in 2007, when we did this. They also, I got some stuff from their council up there, that they also were looking at 2.75 mileage on their property tax the same year. They were going through this whole same process that we're going through. And they, they even have an ordinance on it, and I believe it was defeated. I have a call-in, trying to find out what happened on the property tax, they even, they even talked about that. I have a lot of people that I've talked to that they don't even want to think about property tax. They believe it should be the income tax, like they were splitting years here a little bit, but we should be asking for any more than need. And I don't really see, we need some general fund money, I don't see where it has to all go to the streets, unless we want to all go to the streets and then review it in five years, as Rita's saying. If you're caught up on your streets in five years, then back it off or something. I know the mayor's not very crazy about it going five years, that happens, that's...
Yeah, I'd have to bring it back in about the five years. I mean, you work hard to get the tax letting passed, and I just can't see in five years having to go back and look at it again. We know our expenses aren't gonna be down in five years. And we know that if we do start having a lot of income in five years, I mean, I just, think about how far behind we are in infrastructure compared to cities. I mean, you can't do anything except get caught up quicker if that tax stays in effect. And I'm frankly, I'm not sure if fiscal recovery commission will approve it with a five-year cap on it. I just, I just don't know that it would.
I would say I would agree with that as well. I think the five years, it's kind of scary to put a five-year limit on it, because we're just gonna put a council in the same year somewhere and five more years. Instead of, if we can actually pass this, we're gonna need this for longer than five years. But that's the reality of it. I do like the idea of percentage credit, so we can hit other people as well, and we never did that before. I think for like, I think we should probably maybe ask some people, like, follow the numbers for, like you said, 87.5, maybe also for 90, because that just seems cleaner. If it's a big difference or not, I don't know. If we're reaching out to a lot more people, I think we might be able to make up that money. For campaigning purposes, another thing, for me, 90% credit, that's kind of clean, rather than 87.5. People could do the math much easier on 90%.
I understand, it's hard to try to get it passed again, but I think more so, it's a psychological thing. You know, if somebody says, "I'm gonna tax you from now until eternity," that's pretty scary. But if we say we're only gonna do it for five years, I think we have a better chance of getting it passed. Because they don't think it's gonna be on forever. I mean, that's...
But your expenses aren't gonna go away in five years. They're gonna continue to grow up, so you're just living a home you can't get out of, if we do that.
But if we pass it now, then in five years, then they see what we're doing, what we said we're gonna do, it's done, then there're gonna be more out to vote for it again. I just think we need to, need to give something different.
Yeah.
Well, what I would say is right there, the expenses are not gonna even go down. Another thing that we have to consider along the way, and that, you know, gives us more reason to be concerned about carryover policies, we go on economic cycles too. So, there's no guarantee five years from now, we're gonna be in a downward spiral or stable. There's a lot of unknowns out there, and we have the plans, put that in mind too.
I'm still not decided yet, but I'd just like to say that, you know, we have school levies that are, they come up every five years. And in most cases, I don't, in fact, I don't remember ever a renewal being defeated. So, I kind of think it's back to, you know, I can't guess right now exactly what's gonna be going on in five years. But in a school, no, with their five-year property tax level, they have to go back again. So, I'm not really afraid of some of that stuff like that. I still am trying to understand why you want to go to the 87.5%. First of all, if we go to the 2%, we're gonna get 0.2 even if you live in Brewster. Right. If we froze it at 1.8, you live in Brewster or in Navarre, and you're still gonna pay the 2 tenths that you're...
Probably pay 2%.
Every single person that's paying income tax will be paying the 2 tenths. Whether they live here or don't live here, they're all going to pay that 2 tenths. But I think we need some more money in the numbers box. Like I said last time, we looked at even 1.95 last year, when we did the 2.2, and it was minor. I don't see where all of this has to go to streets. I mean, it's a good idea, but I mean, if we put three-fourths of it in the streets, it's still a huge increase.
We just can't show it the general fund.
That's why I'm talking, yeah. That's it, I mean, sure that she's, she's not saying there's not enough revenue there.
Right.
She says, "Need some of it needs to go to the general fund if we're gonna do it that way." She's not saying there's not enough revenue, we need to have some of it go to the general fund.
Right.
Is that what she's saying?
Yeah, the way the last one was structured, it was revenue neutral to negative, 556,000.
Let's see the numbers, right, if we run, if we can look at our options. We've looked at two or three different options, let's see what those numbers add up to. I think it'd be fair, maybe 1.75, like I said, one and a half to the streets, the other half to general fund. 87.5% and then have 1.5 increase go to streets, 0.5 to general fund, with 87.5% credit. Just to keep it clean, that way it's always 1.5% of the, the 1.5 increase goes to streets, 0.5 to general fund. Play then whatever tweak you want to do, since we have numbers to point this conversation. That one's Ms. Halter. Is that a lot of Ms. Halter?
I'm not Ms. Halter, but that's better.
Okay. You know, it seems simple because we're getting close, and we've been talking about all these numbers. I think we all generally have an idea of some of this stuff here, how we feel. I'm gonna, I still, I'm kind of stuck with that 1.8, but I'm gonna ask her to run exactly what we're talking about, with 1.75 credit, or we're gonna change it to 0.875. I think that is not what you said, 0.875. It is, yeah. The other thing is, there's two other things. When do we want it to happen? As far as when do we want it to go to vote? And also part of this, they did not think we had enough time, or we had enough consideration on committee and stuff like that. I don't see how we could possibly resolve that for them in the next two weeks. But having said that, Nancy's already talked to one person in the community, you want to talk about that, Annie? It just happens to be the same name that I had in my head too.
I called a gentleman, he's very well-known in the city, he's retired now. I called him last time and asked him to chair this committee, and he was still working, didn't work anymore. Now, he's willing to help, and I'm not sure if he wants to be chairman of the committee, but I said, "Well, we could two people, go chair." He's thinking, he definitely wants to help us, and I think that's the key here, is if we can get citizens, non-citizens involved in this, instead of council, like or door, because people view us as politicians, a lot of people don't trust us. I think we need to get more citizens involved, and whether or not we go with a professional marketing company or whatever, but I think we need to really work on getting the message out. I know I was sick last year, and I couldn't help, and I'm sorry about that. But I know that I never got anything when you went door-to-door. Either did my son, either did my sister-in-law. So, I don't know why, or what, but something was missed there. So, those are just some things that I figured they missed me because I lived there, and I figured I knew. But anyway, I think that's something we need to look into, and I think that's what the commission's looking for. One member I talked to said that we gave them a proposal, but no plans. Of course, that's when we moved it, no family, and it was getting late. So, I think we have to, when we turn them down, we have to let them know our plans. So I should hear from them.
Um, just thought about, and if you remember, what was John Maul back here for the CIC? Anybody remember what it was when he was here?
Yeah, he was on the CIC.
Yeah, well, he was here one night here a couple of months ago, what was that for? Was it street landscape? And he made a point that night, that maybe they could help us with our tax issue. He made that point that night. So, you know, maybe if it's not him, you know, maybe we could get a couple of co-chairmen, they could help each other out. Especially if we're giving you that number, you know, maybe then there's some other people who's, maybe somebody's already indicated to him, they'll help you. And he said he, maybe they could help us.
I mean, I'm not putting Lou Gehrig down, I think he's a very good guy, but nobody else would be, so we need names that people can respect.
Oh, he had Tommy Vaughn.
Well, we heard bad things about that because they thought he was remitted amongst properties, that's the rumor that's going around.
The one thing we do have to get away from, no matter who runs this, is we have to get away from saying, we don't want that person, we don't like, you know. I, I mean, really, no, we, we had the administration, as even the president of council objected to one chairman. You know, well, they go find another one then for us, okay, but we came up with one, we came up with two. And I think you need to learn that you can't start picking, choose who's gonna support you, we need to get all the support that we can get. And if you don't like somebody, I think maybe you should get off. If you don't like somebody, you have to, because I'm looking for help myself. I'd like to see Lou Gehrig, I'd like to see Tommy Vaughn both be involved, because they both understand the process now, they've both been through, and they know a lot about it.
You know, there's eight of us sitting here right now, if everybody come up with one name, we'd have a good committee.
Okay, yes.
Having a committee is finding good, but if you don't have the money to run a committee, you can't do anything.
No, the committee's the people that go out with the money, that's part of it.
But, but, you know, I think if you're gonna do that, you need to have a certain number of people that are involved with some pretty large businesses in this town. You know, cause the business contributions are the ones that are gonna put you at the top to be able to do all the different mailings and promotion you wanna do.
I know when I worked on property tax for the schools, that we solicited donations, and we did, two times we got out all the information, you can say, you know, people kept saying we'd get more information out of it, we put it all out. The third time we did it, we didn't spend hardly a dime, we just repeated the stuff in the newspaper again, and it passed. So, I thought this people, they're pretty knowledgeable about what's going on here between income tax and property taxes and stuff, I don't really think that's a big problem, and I also, I think most of the people that work and stuff understand that we need revenue periods to sit.
I think our problem is, and I don't mean to summon it to, but I don't think that many people read the paper anymore, number one. Number two, I think that there's a lot of misinformation on, on websites and on social media. How we're gonna counteract that, I don't know. That's why I'm, they're finding things on, on social media that's telling them things that are not true, so they believe it because that's where they write it, so.
And we can't control that.
So we need to reach them somewhere away, and a website would be good, and things like that. I, I mean, all you people work for, for the office, and I don't think you're gonna have time to be, and I don't think you can wait till after November to start. But that's just my-
Well, how soon do we wanna meet again? I'm going to get all Laura, I will get all the scenarios run. And could we do this Wednesday? I know, you know, Wednesday or Thursday. And hopefully we have something that we can put in place and vote on it the 15th, discuss it prior to the meeting, just like we did the last time, vote on it the 15th, because we know it has to be voted on, we already made that mistake once. And turn it over to me. That, and we're gonna have to have a special meeting a little later in the week, next week to approve it.
Um, I'm all for having a special meeting this week to try and get this there or not. I was gonna say, I mean, I know after we vote on it, it goes back to the mayor, but I guess any communication with mayor prior to his voting on it, just to know if, you know, if she's amenable to any of these points.
Well, I think they're gonna report back exactly what we just said. I'm over. How long you guys are accurate in reading that information?
Well, we're-
Is there gonna be another meeting with the mayor at all, do we know, like you had?
I haven't heard anything.
I would say out of this, if there's something you hear that you'd like to talk about, let us know.
That would be helpful.
Getting together, we need to get something here Wednesday or Thursday at the latest.
Whoever emails Laura asking for the numbers, I don't, I don't know if the administration feels included, I mean, can we have Laura send her response to our number request to Ken at least, so he has it, because she has it included.
You can send it everywhere. You know, we'll have Diane forward it to everybody, it's not a secret, it's, you know, it's out there. And-
But we really can't schedule a meeting till Laura gets the numbers back to us, so.
Well, I think we need to tentatively do something here.
I would say please, do you want it on the agenda for the 15th?
I would like to see that, you know, if we can accomplish it by then, we're gonna have to have a meeting the 16th or 17th or maybe the 18th. And I know we're in summer and everybody's busy and-
All right, Laura, is that we vote on the 11th?
Yeah, well, we tell Laura, we're gonna tentatively meet on the 11th, but we need her numbers in front of all of us, like, we just have to meet on the 11th.
Cause she is back in office tomorrow, so she should be able to do these things. She's getting, she's turning around in a day.
Can we fill out the seven, that's the week, everybody?
Yeah, again?
That's seven, 11.
Okay, so I'm good.
I'll be out of town already, but that's okay.
Are you gonna be back in the next week then, or are you just gonna be all gone?
I will be gone all week, I'm going to Wythe. Can we touch you? I will be unavailable, I'm sorry.
Well, let's try to get something for the evening, though.
Don't call me.
We have a lot of, Ed here kinda mentioned seven o'clock, we're gonna know people here at seven o'clock Thursday. Six thirty.
You guys, it's Thursday, it's Thursday, I'm gonna be here.
How about six thirty? Council's starting to look fine.
Okay, so what time are we set?
Six thirty.
Six thirty. That's tentatively, Diane, make sure the press knows it. I wonder where they were at tonight?
Cause Steve's back, he called me today.
Okay.
And he's back.
Well, let him know. Do you let the repository know?
They're on my agenda checklist.
You let them both know. It says a lot of these things are supposed to go to two newspapers, we might not have two newspapers before.
If they both ran by the same team?
Yeah, so maybe the articles are all the same.
She'll just send them tomorrow. Pardon?
Okay.
Jay David.
Jay David, he's got a newspaper, isn't he? Is that okay? You wanna try that? Pretty close here. All right. You.